Okay, this is the Village of Peatone Board Meeting for October 14, 2013. We begin by rising to say to pledge allegiance. Please join us.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Riker.
Here.
Mr. Hupkey.
Here.
Mr. Wicker.
Here.
Mr. Hack.
Here.
Mr. Forsyth.
Here.
Okay, let the record show that we have a quorum present and we may conduct official business. First order being the approval or correction of the September 23, 2013, regular village board meeting minutes. Trustees, you have them in your packet. If you see a reason to correct them, please let us know. Otherwise, I will accept the motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Motion.
Sir. Motion by trustee Forsyth, seconded by trustee Riker, to approve the September 23, 2013, regular village board meeting minutes as presented. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey.
Present.
Mr. Wicker.
Present.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
And President Gray.
Yes.
Minutes approved as presented. Next item has to do with the accounts payable and the payroll. We have trustees in your packet, the payroll for the pay period ending September 14 of 2013 in the amount of $43,485.07. We also have, under accounts payable, bills from the general fund totaling $69,305.92 and bills from the water and sewer fund totaling $42,789.24. The total for the latter two categories of bills from the general fund and water and sewer fund is $112,095.16. Trustees, I will entertain a motion to pay the bills as presented.
I make the motion we pay the bills.
Second. Motion by trustee Wicker. Thank you. Second by trustee Riker, to pay the bills as presented. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Okay. The motion carries and bills will be presented, paid as noted. We come to the public comment and/or question part, and this is for any item that is not on the agenda. So if you're on the agenda later, we will take care of your topic when we get there. Is there anybody who has a question or comment who is not on the agenda later? Hearing done, I'm going to move down to reports of committees and officials. We have trustees in your packet, the receipt report from the clerk collector and the treasurer on the funds of the village, receipts for the last month. If there are no questions on that, we will move forward. The police chief is unable to be present tonight, so we're going to move on to the engineer's report. Troy, do we have any updates on any?
I have updates on a couple of the projects going on.
Okay.
The street resourcing project was just completed. The this year sidewalk program is about to start, most likely this week. And the sewer rehabilitation project on Route 50 is scheduled to start on October 21st.
That will be on Route 50. So there will be times when Route 50 will be down to one lane or partial lane closures?
Yeah, partial lane closures on Route 50. It's maybe some local traffic on the through streets, the cross streets coming up to Route 50.
Okay, that's starting on the...
October 21st.
21st. All right, trustees, any questions of the village engineer? Hearing done, I'm going to move on. Under old business or is done, under new business, our first order of business comes from the Girl Scouts. Okay, would you please introduce yourself?
Yes, my name is Kristen Webster. I am representing the Girl Scouts in Peatone, Wilton Center, and Green Gardens. I'm here to ask for permission for three different things, and I'll start with the first on the agenda, which is a helping hands food drive.
Okay.
We are asking for permission to do a paper bag drop on November 2nd, and then a group collection on November 9th. And on November 9th, the time would be from 9:00 a.m. until noon, door-to-door.
And that's on a Saturday, correct?
Yes, both dates are Saturdays. For both the drop and the pickup, the Girl Scouts are covering three specific areas in the town. We're covering Golandings, the meadows, and the neighborhood that is east of Route 50 behind Tony's Pizza.
Okay.
The other areas will be covered by Boy Scouts and the Feskins.
Oh, okay. So this is a joint project that is going to go on with the Boy Scouts in... Okay, gotcha.
Right, but we're just asking for permission for our sections.
Gotcha.
You said the pickup was going to be...
The pickup will be November 9th, 9:00 a.m. until noon.
All right. And the other two requests?
Okay, the second is for fall product sales, which the Girl Scouts use as a fundraising effort. It will go on between now and October 26th, so we're just asking permission to sell door-to-door starting tomorrow on the 15th till October 26th, after school till dusk, and on the weekends, 9 till dusk. The sales include candy, nuts, magazines, and that's our first fundraising effort of the year.
Okay. All right.
And then the last is for our cookie sales, come and early, but it's in January, but we wanted to do all of it tonight. So the sales for cookies will be January 4th through the 26th of 2014. And again, we're just asking permission to go door-to-door for sales after school through dusk on the weekend, or the weekdays, and on the weekends, 9 to dusk.
Trustees, any questions?
Good luck.
I think it would be in order to accept a motion including all three. Jim?
Yes, all three would be fine.
Okay. So...
I'll motion that.
Second. Motion by trustee Forsyth, seconded by trustee Hupkey, to grant the requests of the Girl Scouts, the three requests. One is the food collection. The second is sales of various food items. And the third is the cookie sales. Sales would take place weekdays after school until dusk, and on the weekends from 9:00 in the morning until dusk. Okay? You've got the dates for all those in that, so include that in the motion. So, motion and second, please call the roll on that motion.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Motion granted.
Thank you.
Good luck with your projects.
Thank you.
Ladies, do you have anything in writing you could give the reporter from the Vidette? You might get a little PR out of it.
Yes, I will send her everything.
Okay.
You got her email? Good. All right, next item is the Boy Scout troop. So, gentlemen, if you would introduce yourselves.
Hello, my name is Jake Petrusak, and this is Justin Cemetti. Thank you for having us. We are Boy Scouts from Peatone's Troop 315, and we are asking for permission to canvass the town on Saturday, November 2nd, from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. Our 23rd spaghetti dinner will be on Saturday, November 16th. Serving starts at 4:00 p.m. and continues until 7:00 p.m. at the Peatone American Legion.
All right, and the actual dinner is... Repeat the date?
Yes.
Or did you say it? Yeah?
Yes.
Okay.
It's on the 16th, November, Saturday?
Okay. Gotcha. And you are?
I'm Justin Cemetti, and at the dinner, we will have spaghetti, salad, garlic, bread, along with desserts, coffee, and lemonade. We hope to see you there.
You will if you sell us a ticket. And we're very willing buyers. Gee, I was going to ask you, have you got everything in there that you need?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. For some reason or other, I'm having one of those senior moments.
It's never a problem. I've always got the information.
All right. So, we're asking permission to sell the... Oh, it was, the tickets were $6, already said that, right? Okay. I want to make sure you get all the information out that needs to be out, both in the TV viewers as well as to the newspaper. All right, is there a motion to grant the request of the Boy Scout troop to go to order?
So moved. Second.
Okay, and you've got the dates. So, please call the roll.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries, permission granted, good luck with the tickets, and yes, we will, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item, special event permit for the American Legion. Is there somebody here from that?
There isn't anyone here. This is a yearly event.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, you have a letter from Mr. Clausen, the commander, Peatone American Legion, to request permission for the annual Gifts for the Yanks. Collection day on Saturday, November 2, 2013, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at various locations, K.C. Shells, First Community Bank, First Midwest Bank, Post Office, Crankers, and Burk Hots.
And just the observation, we've got both Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts and the American Legion active on November 2nd, very active. Who says nothing goes on in the town of Peatone? All right, trustees, we have any questions on that?
Motion.
Okay, motion by trustee Forsyth, seconded by trustee Hack, to approve the request of the Peatone American Legion to do a Gifts for Yanks fundraiser at the designated locations on November 2nd. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, and permission granted for that activity also. Next item has to do with the Peatone Chamber of Commerce and Halloween. George?
Yes, we have a letter from the Chamber, from Tammy Hoffman at the Chamber of Commerce. Peatone Chamber of Commerce respectfully requests permission from the Village of Peatone for an open burn on October 31st, 2013. The purpose is for the annual Halloween hot dog roast on October 31st from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. The event will be held at the Peatone Park District this year. As a footnote, I believe they're also trying to conduct, once again, the truck retreat for the Chamber members, from the Chamber members.
Yeah, where the kids go, people have their cars full of trucks.
Last year, they did it on the baseball field, right on the infield, so it was all contained.
Oh, okay.
And it wasn't, no grass involved or anything like that, so...
I'm assuming they'll probably...
Yeah.
It seemed to be successful. All right, so the motion, we need a motion to give permission to the Chamber for the open burn for the hot dog roast.
Motion.
Second. Motion by trustee Hupkey, seconded by trustee Riker, to grant permission to the Peatone Chamber of Commerce to operate the Halloween hot dog roast open burn on October 31st from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries, and this is, permission is granted for the open burn. Okay, next item has to do a request. Is the person...
I believe they are, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, Ms. Beverly Cosino, 416 Northwest Street, submitted a fence variance application for the installation of a chain link fence. Ms. Cosino has advised the village co-prohibited applications for variances for residential fence materials, including chain link. I advised her that I could not process a variance application for a chain link fence as is prohibited. She is present this evening to ask the board to consider variations for chain link fencing. Before the board could receive an application of this type, an ordinance amendment removing the prohibition would be necessary, and I believe she's here this evening.
Yes, would you come forward, please?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bev Cosino, and I think Mr. Gray said it all, so I don't know what the protocol is, but I'm asking you to consider, you know, lifting or whatever, the variance on the fence for the chain link fence.
Okay. Do you have a specific reason why you would like, why you would need a chain link as opposed to something else?
Well, one of the reasons is the cost. We looked into some other type of fencing, the PVC fencing, which is two times as much, if not more, and the wood, which I really don't like because my experience with the wood fencing is the upkeep. You know, I've had friends and family members who have had cedar wood type fencing, and it always ends up looking, you know, leaning and things like that. So the fencing that we are looking at, I gave Mr. Gray some pictures to view, and it's attractive, it's very heavy duty, it has the PVC coating over the chain link, so it's, you know, you can get it in white, or black, or I believe green. So it's an attractive-looking fence. And our house does sit back, and there's a lot of trees in front, so it wouldn't even be visible from the street. We're doing it in the back area of the lot. And we have dogs, and my parents live with us, they're elderly, and they can't let the dogs out. And up till recently, there's been someone home that could, but my son, his job has changed, so now he's working during the day as opposed to the evening. So it's become, you know, an issue. So that's...
Procedure on this is the board members at this time, the trustees, need to offer some thoughts as to whether or not they would like to review the ordinance for possible change, or just proceed with the ordinance as it is, which basically prohibits any variance related to chain link material. Trustees? Have you spoke to your neighbors about this?
Yes, sir. And that's another reason, you know, where we live, we live on West Street, near the fire department. Actually, our driveway would be almost, if you back out, almost exactly even with summer. So the lots are big, it's an open, you know, it's very open between us and our neighbors. And I've spoken to them, and, you know, we don't want to close them out, we like the openness, that's another reason. And they're all for it. So, yeah, I mean, they have no problems with the chain link, in other words. They prefer that we did the chain link so that we didn't close them out, and we're very close with our neighbors, and so... And I can, you know, get signatures if that's what need be.
And you stated that you were interested in the vinyl coating?
Yes, sir.
And you do know that they do crack after a few years? And most of them don't come with more than about a five or 10 years warranty.
I don't think this is a 10-year guarantee. I have the information. I think Mr. Gray has the information as well. The one that we're looking at is the heaviest, you know, gauge that they carry, and it's, I think it's very attractive.
Any other questions or comments?
What's your timeline on doing this fence?
As soon as possible. As I say, it's become an issue, you know, with my folks. My mom is almost blind, and my dad has dementia, and that's another issue, too, is not only are we trying to keep the dogs in, but my dad as well, because he's wandered lately, and that's kind of scary. One of the way we're going to put the fence is so that they literally can open the door and the dogs can go out, you know? No one has to walk them, in other words, they can go right out the door.
I would make a motion that we table this, so that we could further review this.
Do you think you guys will be away two weeks?
Most definitely.
Let us look into this a little bit more.
Yeah.
Would you consider permacult? Permacult is a, it's a little longer, it's about a 15-year, but it's more expensive.
Um...
Are you more interested, are you more interested in a cost?
Well, the cost is definitely an issue, but I personally do not like wood fences.
Permacult is, I mean, it's still chain link, but it's just a different type of a coating that's adhered to, and it's about a 15-year or more warranty. But see, the problem with the vinyl coating or permac coating is if one of them crack because of a UV rays, eventually it's going to crack, it's going to look pretty bad. And there's not too many ways that you can repair that versus just a regular vinyl fence or a wooden fence, or even just a chain link fence where you could actually take a thick net roller and paint it.
Right.
So, I mean, you know, we get, I get what you're saying about the vinyl, and I totally understand that, but this is why I think we need a little bit more time.
So you're suggesting, I understand.
We just need a little bit more time for everybody to maybe...
You're suggesting, if you did consider it, to do possibly the permacult or without any coating whatsoever?
This is what I'm saying, it's just a choice that everybody's going to have to, because there's three different ways of doing it.
Right.
If it's going to go to a chain link.
And you know, I don't know, I didn't look that close at the specs, I think Mr. Gray has them. Was it a permacult?
No, I have, I have...
Oh, you have it?
I did my own research.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, but I just think maybe, I'd say I'd make a motion that we table this, so that everybody could research this a little bit more. Sure. And just, so you understand, tabling it is the decision whether or not to...
Change the ordinance.
Change the ordinance.
We have to change the ordinance.
Right, I understand.
If that decision were to be made at the next meeting, we could not act on an ordinance until at least the meeting after that, which is another two weeks.
Thank you.
Okay? So just to make sure you understand the timeline, that would be here on this. Okay, so there's a motion by trustee Hupkey to table this for further study until the next meeting? Is there a second to that?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Riker. Okay, clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, it will be tabled until the next meeting for further research.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a special use permit for 400 South Harlem. George, you want to...
Mr. Mike Van Quaken wishes to operate a limited auto body repair shop at 400 South Harlem. This property is Zoned B3, and this type of business requires a special use permit in that classification. Scope of work is to repair minor dent and cosmetic damage. No painting or major body repair work will be done at the site. Planning and zoning commission has conducted a public hearing on the case. While one resident was present, she stated her concerns were addressed during the presentation. The planning and zoning commission forwards a 6-0 favorable recommendation with the following conditions. One, no painting is permitted. Two, no mechanical repair work is permitted. Three, no chemical storage is permitted. Four, the hours of operation are limited to 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Saturday. Five, no vehicles should be stored outside overnight. And six, cosmetic and dent work is to be conducted, only no body repair work. The village board may accept the findings of the planning and zoning commission and approve the special use. If the board chooses to deny the request, the board will need to develop an independent findings of fact.
Okay, so trustees, this would be ordinance number 13-12, depending on how you go with this, to approve the recommendations of the findings, or rather, of the planning and zoning commission, or if you have a different spin on this. Is there anybody here on that?
Yes. Does that meet your guys' parameters?
And their findings?
Yes, those conditions are agreed to between all the parties of the planning and zoning.
Who set the hours? I. Okay. Other questions?
I'm good with it.
Second.
Motion, sir. I guess I'm good with this, not an official motion. Motion.
Okay, that would be, motion to approve ordinance 13-12, the special use permit at 400 South Harlem Avenue Auto Body Repair Shop, with, based on the findings of the planning and zoning commissions, with the six stipulations, six conditions. Okay, clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, ordinance 13-12 is approved for the special use with the six conditions stated.
Good luck.
The planning and zoning.
Good luck in Peatone.
All right, we're going to move on. Next item has to do, it's a resolution, a request for a fence variance along the placing of the fence within the property lines. George, do you want to...
Yes, Mr. Gerald Baker requests a fence variance to place a fence inside the property lines with the attached drawing. He wishes to place the fence six inches off of the west property line, avoid his neighbor's underground sprinkler system, off of the easement to avoid underground power lines, partway across the rear of the house to leave the electric meter available for combat. The fence will be a four-foot, black aluminum fence. You have pictures of the yard, you had the application and pictures of the location along the rear lot, lot well, along the house edge of the rear easement. The fence would extend 29 feet across the back of the house, leaving about 15 feet of the back of the house that would be outside the fence.
Are that primarily for an easement?
And the easement is off the north side, 15 feet is to keep the electric meter available.
Ah, okay.
It's located on that part of the wall of back of the house.
Okay. Is there, are there any questions, trustees, relative to this?
Motion.
Second. Okay, this would be resolution 13-R11, approving a variance to placing a fence inside the property lines at 712. Clerk, please call the roll.
I'm going to hear the second.
Hupkey.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Okay, resolution 13-12, whoops, I take it, yeah, 13-R11 is approved as requested. Okay, next item is a resolution for fence variance. Next item is a resolution for a fence variance, uh, to permit partial privacy fence. George?
This is at 108 West Lincoln Street. Nicholas and Francis Romanchik have a permit to install a new PVC fence around portions of their backyard. They are installing a four-foot tall vinyl picket fence. However, as they were completing the project, they felt one section of the fence would be better served as a six-foot vinyl privacy fence. They state their neighbor's house is five feet off of the property line, uh, the Romanchiks have three dogs, they feel their neighbors would be bothered less by their dogs if that section of fence was a privacy fence as opposed to picket fencing. After reviewing the application, an additional variance is needed to waive the requirement extending the fence to the rear lot line. Access to the garage on this property is from a back alley. They wish to place the fence to the rear of the grassy area in the rear yard, but not to the alley side of the garage. This placement would eliminate the need for a gate to access their parking area and garage. Uh, the variances to permit a six-foot PVC privacy fence along a portion of the side yard is indicated on the attached drawing. An additional, uh, uh, variance is needed to waive the rear property line requirement. We have a resolution incorporating both of those variances, should you so wish to do that. If you have any questions, I believe Mr. Manchik is here this evening.
Motion.
Second.
Okay. A motion to approve, approve the requests for, uh, privacy fence placement and property line? I'm trying to think of, I'm looking for the categories of this.
Yeah, that was it, basically.
Okay. And this would be resolution 11-R12. So the motion was by trustee Huckkey, seconded by trustee Forsyth. You may call the roll.
Mr. Huckkey?
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Wicker?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.
Very welcome. Okay, we've come to setting trick-or-treat hours.
Thank you.
And that cleared the room.
That's it, yeah.
All right. Uh, every year we do this, trustees, just so everybody knows, the exact trick-or-treat hours, and, um, that way we're all operating on the same page. And the, historically, we have had trick-or-treat hours between 4:00 PM and 7:00 PM the day of Halloween, which is October 31st. The only time we've had issues is when it's on a particular, Sunday or something like that, when we sometimes put a variation in it. So, I will entertain a motion to set the official trick-or-treat hours in the village of Piattone to be 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM on the day of Halloween, October 31st.
Motion.
Second. Motion by trustee Forsyth, seconded by trustee Riker to officially establish the trick-or-treat hours as 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM on October 31st. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Forsyth?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Huckkey?
Yes.
Mr. Wicker?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries, those are the official trick-or-treat hours, which we trust will be put in the newspaper to help everybody follow. Now, uh, I'm gonna use my prerogative as, as the, uh, cure of the meeting to go down to item eight, correspondence, communications, and petitions, and, uh, this is where we typically make announcements. I need to make an announcement that we are in the process of transitioning, transitioning from branch collection to leaf pickup at this time of the year. Branch collection will officially stop at the end of October and start up again next spring. So, whoever has branches to put out in the village needs to get it done before the end of this month in order to get it picked up, okay? We do that because the same group of people who do the branch pickup are the same people who operate the leaf collection machine. That will officially start on October 14th and end the week of December 2nd, weather permitting. And leaf collection is always based upon the weather and when they can get to it. However, we always ask the, the folks putting out the leaves to put them out by Monday morning, put them out on Sunday, so on Monday morning, even though we may not pick them up on Monday, because there may be something else that happened in the village that we have to take care of that's more important than leaves. But if you have them out on Monday, they will likely be gone by the end of the week. Okay? So, that announcement. Uh, the other is a sidebar item. I, I keep coming across folks who are upset with the village of Piattone because we apparently turned down a Culvers. This seem, does not seem to die, so I would like to put this to rest, hopefully, once and for all. Culvers has never, ever, approached the village of Piattone to request a store.
Never.
And all the trustees are very aware of this, but making this a part of the official minutes and putting it out to everybody, uh, yes, we are in the process of doing a retail study, and that will determine potential businesses that we may wish to attract over, in the future. But the Culvers that went up in Moni was meant to go up in Moni and not in Piattone. So, anybody watching, tell your friends that, please. All right. Now, we are at the point in the meeting where we need to go into an executive session. The reason I did the announcements is there's nothing else that we are going to do after the executive, well, one action maybe, we might decide to release some special session, closed session minute meetings. That's the only thing that we're anticipating. So, I'm going to request a motion to go into executive session for two purposes. One, the purpose of discussing pending litigation, and two, the purpose of reviewing closed session minutes for possible release.
Motion. Second.
Motion by trustee Huckkey, seconded by trustee Forsyth. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Huckkey?
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Wicker?